Good morning, we call this meeting to order. This Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Would you please join us in the pledge allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Now, slightly destroying it, but we got through it. Anyway, um, the board met and closed session this morning. Um, we talked about, uh, item one, um, but we'll share off ongoing conversations where we make reporting that later. Item two, conference of real proper negotiators, direction was given. And item two B, General Services Administration, um, underground storage tank, uh, direction was given. With that, we're gonna move on down to, um, public matters on the, on the agenda. Is there any members of public like to talk about any issues not on our regular agenda? If you'd like to do so, please state beneath the record and sign in.
Good morning, my name is Steve Christensen and I'm from Sutter Creek. And, uh, I'm here today because I attended the last meeting of the Amador County Transportation Commission, um, regarding measure, uh, proposition Q, which failed miserably. Um, and was at wanting to find out if the commission could, uh, pass a bond issue to get the money, uh, to repair our roads that are rapidly deteriorating here in Amador County. And I was told that, um, I should take this issue to the Board of Supervisors. That's why I'm here today, um, to ask the Board of Supervisors to work with county staff, um, and to work with public works to try to find a way to do funding before our roads become, uh, just gravel roads. Uh, they are rapidly, they are, they are deteriorating and we need to repair them. So I was wondering, uh, to ask the Board to do some more. We're, we're not gonna get any help from Congressman McClintock because he doesn't believe in earmarks. So we're gonna have to pull ourselves up by the boots, our bootstraps and get the funding that we need to go ahead and make our roads much better than they are now. So I was wanted to speak in favor of the Board discussing among themselves, uh, ways to get funding and if the Board can pass a bond issue to be able to get the funding needed to repair our roads. Thank you, any comments?
I'm, I'm a little ambivalent on that, um, I mean, the voters have kinda spoken that they like driving on bad roads. Now, I, I look at our responsibility though, um, but I don't wanna become the school, the unified school district where we don't listen to the voters. I mean, basically, they said, "We're gonna do a bond whether major fails or not," when they went out for, for a vote.
Well, I, I think sometimes we have to do as elected officials, things that are not popular, but what are needed by the county. And I think that, uh, the responsibility of keeping our roads repaired starts with the Board of Supervisors. And I know it's not popular, uh, in the community, but I think it's something that's necessary and sometimes you have to do things that are not popular, um, to do what's right for the people who live here.
You know, I, I have to respond to that, Mr. Christensen.
Wouldn't we have to vote for a bond? I mean, wouldn't people have to vote for a bond?
Yes.
Okay.
The thing is, Mr. Christian, we represent people and I'm not gonna say we know better than they know. Um, it's, I mean, you're getting, in my opinion, getting pretty off base saying, "We know better." We're gonna tell you what you're gonna do and we're gonna do it 'cause you don't know better. Um, do we need, do we need some more money for roads? Absolutely. Um, I think part of the problem is there's people out there who are having a hard time paying their bills and they're saying they don't wanna pay any more taxes. Um, until they change their minds, I think we need to honor that. Not say, "We know better and we're, we're gonna pass a bond whether you like it or not." No, I don't see that.
Okay, if you're not going to pass a bond, then I hope that the Board of Supervisors will work on finding some way of getting the money needed to repair our roads before they become just gravel.
And the concern you have, I share it. I'd like seeing the, um, major Q pass, it didn't pass. Um, I think, I thought for quite a while, we could probably take some, get some money from some of the public safety. And there's been a lot of resistance from, um, political bodies, from public safety bodies, but, um, we did get some money out of the budget from, um, Senator Marie Alvarado Gill. It'll be fixing the bridge road. And just for people that are listening out there, um, work's being done there now, it's been done by P G and E. And, you know, that's not the county, it's gonna be fixed probably midpoint next year. But it's, um, there's not a lot of funding sources out there and the state's not gonna come galloping to a rescue. The feds are not gonna come galloping to a rescue, whether it's whoever, maybe or however. Um, so I think probably, yeah, our roads will deteriorate. It's, it's an issue. And at some point, the voters may say, "Hey, we wanna spend more money, pay more money to address that matter." It's up to them. I mean, we all, we all understand the issue here. But I'm not gonna say, "Hey, we're gonna go do this because you people, um, even though you elect this, you're not smart enough to know what you need, we're gonna do it for you." That's not our job.
Well, I'm not saying that you're, you're smarter than they are, I'm just saying that I think the Board should be doing something, uh, to be able to get our roads repaired even though the population voted not to repair our roads. So I just wanted it to be something that you would continue talking about.
Oh, they want their roads repaired.
I just wanna jump in, I jump in for a second. So, issue bond to pass bond measure, it requires a two-thirds vote of the public, which just...
So did pop, so did, uh, proposition Q.
Right, but why would a, I mean, what...
Voters spoke.
Yeah. Uh, proposition five that would've lowered it to fifty-five percent did not pass. So you're looking at needing the same two-thirds majority to vote to pass a bond when they won't pass a sales tax, though. I, I don't know.
So if it ever gets on the budget again, you need to get people to run the campaign that did a better job than the people who ran this campaign. Uh, 'cause I really didn't see much in the county, uh, trying to, uh, get people to vote, uh, for proposition Q. And I thought the people who were running that campaign did a very poor job. But I'd like to see, uh, maybe in two years, uh, having something again, uh, to be able to try to repair our roads and have people involved that are actually going to push for that to pass and can make a good argument for that.
And, and we agree with you, except that we asked, but the county can't put any money into it. You know, we can't hire anybody, we can't do any portion than what we did this time, asking other op, you know, places to help out.
So our roads are gonna continue to deteriorate.
On, you know, we're, we're still working on it. You know, it's not as if this is a done, you know, done deal that we're not gonna do anything. But this is just gonna be a very hard hill to keep climbing.
So let me say this, after, uh, the first of the year, once we get two new board members seated, uh, it's my intention to bring back kinda what you're talking about, which is options for the Board, which is what we're doing currently that we don't have to do. Uh, places we could divert money from, uh, and it will be an opportunity for the new Board to give direction to staff, uh, as we're preparing, uh, the budget. 'Cause we're gonna start going into the budget process in March. And if we wanna put money towards roads, it's gotta come from someplace else. So, um...
We have to think about which services we're gonna have to cut.
Yeah.
You know, is that libraries? You know, what is the services that we, that we don't want? Or we do want, but don't, can't have.
You know, Steve, one of the, you know, silver linings is, uh, both Amador City and Sutter Creek now have passed, uh, measures that will go toward roads. Uh, in one case, it's a, it was a special tax. And, uh, when other people start seeing their roads getting fixed, they're gonna, they're gonna say, "Well, okay, that's, maybe that's the way to go." Yeah, I hope so.
You know, Mr. Christian, one thing I think for you to consider and ponder before we get to our next budget hearing is would you be willing to, um, see some, um, not drastic cuts, but some minimal cuts to some of the public safety organizations and ask them to, hey, maybe tighten their belt and streamline a little bit? Would you be supportive of that and putting that money towards roads? Um, it could take some people saying, "Hey, we support that." And if they say, "We don't support that," then, there's not that many fu- funding sources really where there's any extra money floating around. I mean, like, you take our surveying department, it's staffed by a surveyor half-time, not even full-time. And there's one, one person there, one lady that works, works there, so some of these departments, there's not much fat to cut out of them. The only place there may be some fat is some of the public safety. And so you gotta, you and some of your friends that are people that are listening out there, gotta decide, hey, where are we in this, in this battle for funding, for lack of better, um, uh, better comment? And I mean, the public safety people, they're not gonna like it. They're gonna holler and scream and yell. Um, and so that's kind of, that's our options. 'Cause really, there's not much available money out there. Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna, so do you wanna, um, I guess, but shouldn't get too far into this, it's, uh, under public comment. So I see my county council going, "Hey, guys."
Please, I know you're gonna be talking about it and that's the important thing, okay?
Yeah, we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public? Like, no Zoomers? Uh, moving down, we're looking for approval agenda.
Mister Chair, I would like to pull item seven Z for discussion.
Okay, you're talking on the consent.
Yeah.
Okay, well, for to discuss the consent, then also, um, we, we had a request from our C A O to pull to a future meeting items seven, A G, and seven V. So, um, you wanna talk about seventeen L?
Z.
Oh, seven Z.
Well, you mean seven Z, A A, A B, and A C, or all those?
Yeah, they're all part of the same.
Okay. Um, like discussing that?
Okay, you're ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
These are Pine Grove Corridor Improvement Project money. They have to do with extending, uh, right-ofways for construction of the Pine Grove Project that we still haven't gone out with bid and it was over budget the first time. So I can't see us paying this beforehand if we don't even know we're gonna do it still.
I can't fault your logic, any response, Chuck? The, uh, these are extension of existing, uh, so I, I know there were some large numbers there, those numbers have already been paid. None of the, uh, none of the, uh, costs here are six thousand, exceed six thousand dollars for any particular entity for the extension. So that, uh, there's not a lot here, it is Caltrans money, it's not county money, uh, that we're spending. So, uh, it is, I know that doesn't necessarily make it feel any better. Um, the, um, the issue is if it expires, having to go renegotiate the whole thing. And we are at that point right now where the, the plans are complete, the, um, the, uh, the, the plans are back in Caltrans hands for review. And they're not gonna let us go forward if we don't have, uh, the actual, uh, right-of-way, um, complete. So if, if these are holes, they will not give us approval to go to edit it out.
Are these extensions for farther down the road? Or is this where we were originally talking about, right there around the new modified plan?
These are only in the areas where, where the new modified plans, uh, take place. They're, uh, not down the road, I asked Rich that question.
Okay.
By the major Q, I thought we should bring this up.
No, I, I agree, I think it's good to have a clarification. Because, um, we would not, we'd not wanna be renewing all, all agreements for the whole project, but a lot of it's dead, so...
Correct.
We appreciate the clarification.
There's one in particular that we talked about that's particularly distasteful, but that's, that's expiring.
Now, we've had extensive discussions on this in the past and the Board has by majority voted to proceed with this. So I think at some point, it's time to stop shaking the bone and set it down and move forward.
Pretty ugly bone, in my opinion.
Just keep paying for a project that's never gonna happen.
Or we can give back four million dollars plus and lose that.
Save nine.
Yeah, no, I haven't liked this project from this, for a long time. Um, I will say we made it a lot smaller, which is a lot more powerful than it was.
It was.
It, it was kinda like the, um, kiss from Dracula, but it's, it's still not very nice, but, um... I think the Board, the Board has said so. And I don't think this is, it's, Chuck sends Caltrans money and it's not a lot, so I mean, it kinda honors the Board's wishes, which, um, I wish we'd killed this thing a long time ago, but it's still going in, in a modified version, so... Are you satisfied, Supervisor Crew?
Yep.
Okay. And so with items seven A G and seven V polled, looking for a vote on consent agenda, motion?
We never voted on the agenda.
You're right. Wanna make that a motion?
I'll make, well, they are, is supervisor...
There were a motion made to approve the agenda.
Yeah, okay. Motion was by...
Axe.
Axe, second was by...
Forster.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries unanimous?
Who's to approve the consent agenda?
With items seven A G and seven V polled, future meeting?
Everything. You wanna vote on them separately or what do you wanna do?
No, uh, items seven A G and seven V have been polled at future meeting, so with that, with them polled?
Yeah.
C A O wanna pull.
Okay. Motion by Forster, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Axe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries unanimous? Moving on down the regular agenda, we have item six A, this is a presentation, adoption and resolution celebrating and raising awareness for National Adoption Day and Children in Foster Care in Amador County. And we have a resolution. Looking for a motion to approve resolution? Okay. There are motion by Crew and a second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carries unanimous? Is anybody here to speak on this?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Farah Roberts, I am the Program Manager for the Court of Pointed Special Advocates, uh, Program here in Amador County. We're a nonprofit that trains community volunteers to walk alongside children who are in the foster care system. And we work hand in hand with, with the court. The resolution before you today, um, is, um, by the Superior Court of Amador, who representatives are here today as well. But I'm call, I'm coming to talk about, a little bit about the reason why we are bringing attention to National Adoption Day and hoping to continue to celebrate adoption awareness in Amador County. In Amador County, every year about fifty children come into foster care. The goal is to have every single one of them reach permanency, that means a forever home, within eighteen months. Happily, seventy-five percent of those children go back home. The parents who had some troubles and, and for the reason they were brought into care, get it all put back together and then children go home. But that leaves twenty-five percent of children looking for forever families. Children linger in foster care, they are destined to some horrible outcomes, which include, um, lapses in education, homelessness, joblessness, and potentially early death rates. Studies have shown over and over again that children thrive in forever families. And that is the way that they can come out of the foster care system with better outcomes. So National Adoption Day is here to recognize the families who come forward within the community who will take in children through foster care adoption. The court this year was able to, um, close fifteen different cases involving children through foster care adoption. And this is up from eight from last year. And, and a great opportunity to recognize those people in the county. On November twenty-first, the court will open its doors to the community to celebrate the families who have already adopted and really encourage those in the community who have ever thought about becoming a foster parent to consider this as a way to add to their family and to provide support to children in the community who really need it. So thank you for your time and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir.
You're saying you have like fifty children that are basically in foster care?
Fifty children annually that are brought into here.
Yeah, in this county.
Yeah.
What's the main factor, would you say?
So throughout those last several years, it has been usually parental substance abuse, usually co-pared with, um, domestic violence.
They kinda go hand in hand, yeah?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Well, I have a resolution, I'm, I probably should wait till you give your informational for you pass, but, but my apologies.
That's okay.
I'd like to come down and present it to you.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a quick comment on behalf of the Superior Court and good morning, I'm Andrea Sexton, I'm the Court Executive Officer. Uh, I wanted to echo the sentiments that Ms., uh, Farah Roberts expressed. The court is so pleased to have its second annual adoption day coming up on November twenty-first. There aren't a lot of days when people come to court that are joyful days, right? Most people come and see us on pretty bad days for most folks. Adoption Day is, uh, an adoption day when we have that court. Uh, Docket is one of the most joyful days. If you're ever around, come see the families that are gathering outside of the courthouse and having their pictures taken. And we're just so proud to be having our second annual court adoption day event. So thank you for recognizing that and thanking Ms. Roberts and our partner agencies. Okay.
Is there any other members of public who'd like to speak on that matter? She and then move on down to item six B. This, uh, presentation of a resolution congratulating John Hopkins, Amador County Director of General Services, his retirement. Mister Hopkins, we're expecting long speeches and grand flourishes.
I got stories if you want them, I got all kinds of stories.
I don't know about that. Uh, longs are good stories, John.
They're, they're good stories. Um, I noticed that the bust back there is John Begovic, you know, uh, when he was the supervisor. When I, before I met him, uh, I didn't know who that guy was, but I was building the dais bench at the old courthouse and this guy would come out of the caucus room and he'd just say, "Hey," wave me over. I didn't know who he was and I was running electrical conduit through the floor. Um, he'd go back into the room and he'd come out a minute later and say, "Hey," just wave me over. And I'm thinking, you know, this guy, who the hell is this guy? He's looking to...
That was your second, that was your second mistake.
Oh, yeah. And so he comes out a third time and he says the same thing, says, "Hey," and he stays there. And so I, I stand up, drop my tool belt and I walk over to him and, you know, he's got a, you know, John could have a, um, could appear to be grumpy if you didn't know who he was and I didn't know who this guy was. And so I approached him and I said, "Can I, can I help you at all?" And he puts his hand on my shoulder and I'm thinking, "And now he's touching me? Okay, something, what, what am I gonna do here?" And he says, "I just was kinda wondering where I was gonna sit." I said, you know, the light goes on and I said, "Oh, okay," and he says, "Hey, I just wanna, uh, uh, introduce myself, I'm Supervisor John Begovic." And I said, "Okay, now I got it." I pulled my jets there. It's pretty funny that, and then John and I always had interesting conversations as, as he was the supervisor. I, as... The court this year was able to close fifteen different cases involving children through foster care adoption. And this is up from eight from last year. And a great opportunity to recognize those people in the county. On November twenty-first, the court will open its doors to the community to celebrate the families who have already adopted and really encourage those in the community who have ever thought about becoming a foster parent to consider this as a way to add to their family and to provide support to children in the community who really need it. So, thank you for your time, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir.
You're saying you have like fifty children that are basically in foster care?
Fifty children annually that are brought into care.
Yeah, in this county.
Yeah.
What's the main factor, would you say?
So, throughout those last several years, it has been usually parental substance abuse, usually co-paired with domestic violence.
They kinda go hand in hand, yeah?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Well, I have a resolution, I probably should wait till you give your informational before you pass, but my apologies.
That's okay.
I'd like to come down and present it to you.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a quick comment on behalf of the Superior Court, and good morning. I'm Andrea Sexton, I'm the Court Executive Officer. I wanted to echo the sentiments that Ms. Farah Roberts expressed. The court is so pleased to have its second annual adoption day coming up on November twenty-first. There aren't a lot of days when people come to court that are joyful days, right? Most people come and see us on pretty bad days, for most folks. Adoption Day is an adoption day when we have that court. Docket is one of the most joyful days. If you're ever around, come see the families that are gathering outside of the courthouse and having their pictures taken. And we're just so proud to be having our second annual court adoption day event. So, thank you for recognizing that, and thank you, Ms. Roberts, and our partner agencies.
Is there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on that matter? She and then move on down to item six B. This presentation of a resolution congratulating John Hopkins, Amador County Director General Services, his retirement. Mr. Hopkins, we're expecting long speeches and grand flourishes.
I got stories if you want them, I got all kinds of stories.
Oh, I don't know about that. Longs are good stories, John.
They're good stories. I noticed that the bust back there is John Begovic, you know, when he was the supervisor. When I, before I met him, I didn't know who that guy was, but I was building the dais bench at the old courthouse. And this guy would come out of the caucus room and he'd just say, "Hey," wave me over. I didn't know who he was, and I was running electrical conduit through the floor. He'd go back into the room, and he'd come out a minute later and say, "Hey," just wave me over. And I'm thinking, you know, this guy, who the hell is this guy? He's looking to cage here or what?
That was your second mistake.
Oh, yeah. And so he comes out a third time, and he says the same things, he says, "Hey," and he stays there. And so I stand up, drop my tool belt, and I walk over to him, and he's got a, you know, John could have a, could appear to be grumpy if you didn't know who he was, and I didn't know who this guy was. And so I approached him, and I said, "Can I, can I help you at all?" And he puts his hand on my shoulder, and I'm thinking, "And now he's touching me? Okay, something, what am I gonna do here?" And he says, "I just was kinda wondering where I was gonna sit." The light goes on, and I said, "Okay," and he says, "Hey, I just wanna introduce myself, I'm Supervisor John Begovic." And I said, "Okay, now I got it." I cooled my jets there. It's pretty funny that, and then John and I always had interesting conversations as he was the supervisor as time went on. But I still remember when people were smoking in county buildings, when O E S was under G S A, and we were running drills with smud for the sirens out there in case the nuclear plant had a hiccup or something like that. It's been a long time, forty-one years is a long time, guys, so.
Long time.
Long time.
What are you gonna do now, after you retire?
Well, I get to hang out with my, with Lisa. I've been doing that for a long time, but I've been occupied here, so she gets my attention now, that's good. At least, I think it's good, she might not think it's so good.
Probably, she probably has a list that looks about like this, huh?
Oh, yeah. She has started her list.
Well, anyway, yeah, forty-one years, I think that's, that'd be the longest one I've seen, I think.
Long time. I've tried a lot of things in my tenure, even dressing up in drag to go out for Secretary's Day, but it didn't work out well, Trevor wasn't going for it, so that didn't, it wasn't gonna cut it.
No comment, anyway.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, we have a resolution here, and you know, I guess, I'd like to go ahead and read some of it. You're actually, you're born nineteen sixty-three, you're a little bit older than me.
Yeah.
Got a lot more hair, so congratulations.
Thank you.
John was born nineteen sixty-three. After graduating high school, did two years as seasonal firefighter for the California Department of Forestry. Out of that, he went in the army. Got out of army, and John went into college, Sacramento State University, graduating with honors. And was hired by Amador County in nineteen eighty-three. And worked as a bunch of different jobs in the county. I will say, it looks like you started, started off at square one and worked your way all the way up, and that says, hey, it shows you're capable. That's kinda old-school America. People got a job, maybe they started out pushing a broom, and before they're over, they run the company. So, looks like you went that route. And it's actually a pretty good route, because you see now, a lot of times, people get a degree. "I'm a certified blah, blah, blah." And they're supposed to, they're supposed to run, they're supposed to run a machine. And they show up, and they got all the fancy degrees. I've heard it's happened, I heard it actually happened, and couldn't even turn the machine on. They had some old gender there, and they wanted him to train the new guy, and he'd say, "I'll do it, I want the proper wages for that job." They wouldn't pay him, but, so the kid wrecked all kinds of stuff. So, he started at square A, and went all the way to Z, so that's pretty commendable. And you got your general contractor's license nineteen eighty-six, pyramid construction, seventeen years. And nineteen ninety-eight, became a special projects coordinator, and within a year, you're a project manager. December eighteenth nineteen ninety-nine, married your wife Lisa, and you're going twenty-five years of marriage this year, so congratulations.
I don't think I got pat beat yet, though.
No. And then in two thousand and one, you were promoted to projects manager, from projects manager, deputy director of general services, who probably served what, Trevor Matashaw?
Yes.
And in two thousand and six, you were promoted to director of general services, and that's when I became supervisor, so we worked together a lot of years. And John, you've worked on a lot of projects for the county, I mean, this building was one of them, sure was a handful. Basically, been very instrumental in keeping the county running, there's a lot of moving pieces, and you got a lot of bills to maintain. You got the jail over there, I'm sure is, yeah, it was a quilt of many colors. And jail expansion project, which began in two thousand and seven, did a lot of work on that, made sure that thing came up pretty well. Served the county good for a lot of years, and right now, you're kinda managing another jail expansion project. So, we'd like to thank you for your efforts on behalf of the county, and making sure things are running well, and just working hard. I mean, I know a lot of times I'd be, you know, make a phone call, or you'd call me, and it's like, "Wow, seven o'clock, and Hopkins is still at his office working," so you gave it your all. Anyway, we have a resolution here congratulating you upon forty-one years of service to the county, and...
Thank you.
Does that mean, before he passes, how about, maybe any comments from the board?
Forty-one years of doing anything, I've ended, but having a job.
Now, wait a minute, how long you been married?
I lost count.
Yeah, there you go.
The people you have to deal with every day, and keeping everybody on, is a big job. You did it well, congratulations.
Thanks, Pat. I still remember when we were playing basketball.
Yeah, John, just like to say, thank you for all your work to the county, your dedication, your years of service, and good luck, and enjoy your retirement, whatever, whatever shape that takes.
Same to you, Frank.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause you're gonna, what are you gonna do?
Oh, I got, every Tuesday morning, there'll be a board supervisors' meeting, and consent agenda will be passed.
John, I wanna thank you, you've, you know, my six years here, you've helped me every step of the way. You know, giving me the education on Pioneer Park, all the history on everything that goes around this place. You've known it inside and out, left, right, up, down, anything else that I could possibly ask you, you've never, ever given me a wrong answer, so it's truly appreciated for everything you've done.
Hey, Lisa, did you hear that? Not a wrong answer.
Not a wrong answer.
You're not gonna buy it, John, good luck.
I'd like to thank you for always doing, always working hard, probably harder than most people ever would think. I mean, your hours you put in are, come in early and leave late, and a lot of dedication there to the county, to the taxpayers and residents in the county. But I also wanna thank you for being a good friend, and wish you best in the future. And on your twenty-five years of marriage coming up, that's not too far, so take your wife someplace good, like Europe or wherever she wants to go.
Oh, God. Yeah, well, thank you.
He hammered you there.
No, I'm not gonna get away from that, I don't think. Yeah, well, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the county, forty-one years, you know, what do I say, it's my family. So, it's just kinda the way it is, and yes, I've been dedicated to work, just in me, to work, the way I was raised. It has been a benefit to be a contractor and a business owner, and some of you guys know that as well. It benefits you on both sides, you understand the bureaucracy as well as the private business side, and I think that benefits things. I've been a good steward of the people's money as a purchasing agent as well, always looking for the best value, and had a good time. You know, and I try to be light about it, too.
Is it true or false that you ever posed for Tiger Beat magazine with people like Scott Baio and others, so?
Look, I know you're jealous of the hair, but, you know, no, I've never posed for Tiger Beat magazine. No.
Think you might see a cover of that magazine next week.
So, okay, all right. All right, guys.
Anyway, so we have, actually, any members of the public like to comment?
No, no member of the public wants to comment.
Okay, now take care of that.
There's somebody back there who wants to say something. Come on.
No, they're honoring John's wishes. I know John said he didn't want me to read all of them.
Ah, there we go.
Oh, Christ. I was just asking for help when I said that.
I wanted to say, I was listening to this upstairs, and I thought, gosh, John said forty-one years, holy smokes. I, the first time I met John, you remember where it was? He was number twenty on the basketball court. I was the referee, and he was one of the players. And not a bad player, but the thing was, I always remember about John was, fouls one way or another, he never argued. He said, "Hey, that's part of the game," and he was always very fair. And I, you know, I have a lot of things I rib John about, he gets me about things, but John did a nice job. He was easy to deal with, when I asked him for help, he was of assistance, and I hate to say this, but I kind of enjoyed working with him. So, well done, John. The only thing that really bothers him, I think, about me is golf balls in your yard.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's okay, that's all in good fun.
But anyway, well done, I wanna say.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Why don't you relate what the Purse employee said when you visited Purse? I thought that was kinda funny.
Well, it questioned me as to why, what was wrong with me, and why I was still working.
I just said, "Hey, I'm old-school, man."
You know, it goes to show, I've enjoyed what I've been doing. I needed to be entertained with lots of different things, and I've had the privilege of, I mean, it's really been a privilege to have the seat that I've got, that you guys have entrusted me in, so I've appreciated that as well. It's been a good thing.
No, we do appreciate your efforts. Any other members of the public? Well, Mr. Hopkins specifically asked me not to read the whole resolution, all the wherethas, so I'll just say we have Amador County Board of Supervisors, Resolution twenty-four dash one four three. He looked like a deer in the headlights for a second, I'm not reading it, it's just, it's honor, it's a resolution recognizing, honoring John Hopkins for forty-one years of service to Amador County. So, looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
A move.
Motion by Forster, second by Crew. Can we present it to you, Mr. Hopkins?
You can.
Should we vote on it?
Yes. Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimous.
No, no.
Nobody's abstaining?
Oh, don't make us think about it again.
I'll for the camera. Thank you.
I'm certain that we'll have cake and that kinda stuff, so when it gets close to the time, so.
Oh, sure, you want your cake? Yep.
We'll say goodbye to you then.
Okay.
Now, as John Begovic say, "What are you still doing here, go have fun?"
Yeah.
Now, I imagine, meeting on John Begovic is probably an interesting time.
It's a good time.
Did you know where he was in life?
Yeah.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah, and he had his way with me a few times when he wasn't happy, you know, you could tell that with John right away, so. Especially the day I impounded Norm Waters' horse.
Oh, you gotta be kidding.
Well, so I, you know, and I told him, I said, "Look, there's another stallion out there in a field, I couldn't put it in a field." I got, I had to impound it, it's running around Lower Sacramento Road, but he was just mad at her, well, okay, I understand, but you don't charge him anything for it, get it back there to him. Yes, sir.
Today.
Yeah. Anyway.
Thank you, John, good luck in retirement. Probably be a little of a shock for a while, I think. You're gonna wake up, "Hey, man, I can go do anything I want."
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these guys know, I got my phone on me, so, yeah, I'm always available.
Waiting for the next agenda.
I am waiting for the next agenda, I'm, yeah, that's why I'm here.
We should reverse this, make you work and then retire you.
Get back to work.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any last words?
Any last words? Well, Jim was up here, so to all of my colleagues, I really appreciate working with them over the years. They all know who they are, all my direct reports, general services is home to some wonderful people, and they work hard. They'd have to if they're working for me, right? So, and leaving it in the hands of Glenn, and I think he's gonna be in good shape with the crew that he's got. I appreciate the times that I've had with Chuck and Greg and previous councils. I mean, God, I think John Hahn, when I was here when I started, and he started as a county council in nineteen sixty-seven. So, yeah, a long time. But I appreciate everything that everybody's ever done and worked with me, really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Last words.
Well, wanna go into the, we're doing now item six C?
Yes.
This is the Capitol Improvement Project Report.
Yeah, I figured since it was gonna be my last meeting, I'd just give you guys an update on some projects, and in particular, the jail project, but before, and I've got some little, some pictures here for you guys. But before I get to that, do you have any questions on the report on any of the projects that I've got listed there? If not, I'll talk about the jail project.
The, are we ever gonna get rid of the leaks and wet spots in the I T as you enter from the outside?
It's ironic you ask about that. So, here, I don't know, it's probably been a month or so ago, talking with Chuck, I bought the crew a thermal camera. So, the idea is, before, it was, you know, expensive, a couple thousand dollars with all the equipment, but the idea is to locate that leak without having to first tear off all of that thin brick on the outside of the wall. And if I can locate that, pinpoint it, then we might save ourselves quite a bit of money and frustration. But we've never been able to trace the leak. You know, water, as you guys know, finds its own path, and it's very difficult sometimes to find out where it's coming from. So, we have that thermal camera, it's on a staff's hit list to do before the end of the year, and to start to see if they can't identify specifically where that leak is.
Yeah, I would, because there's no reason they should have to put the material in the I T in that area up on blocks to keep it from getting wet.
Right, right. They've been dealing with that for a long time.
I know, it's, and it was a construction error, but sooner we can identify it, the better.
Right, so that's the course going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I will say, in your defense, somehow, as a kid growing up, we had some renovation done in our house. I changed the roof line, maybe got too flat, I don't know, but we tried every damn thing we could think of trying to find, stop that water leak, and it was, it was a bear.
It can be a bear.
You're chasing something behind something, somewhere, coming from somewhere, going somewhere, and, yeah. Jail project?
So, jail project. I just wanted to point out here, if you read the little paragraph, I was, you know, going back through time here. You know, we started that back in two thousand and seven, and I've been teasing Eric Fadness here, our architect of record is here today as well, and so is Lance Dufry and Eric Graham from Vanner. But I started that relationship with Eric back then, and he's hung in there with the county ever since. And through A B nine hundred, when we were awarded that twenty-two million, and then turned that money back in, and then subsequently went back out for additional funding through S B eight sixty-three. And through all of that, you know, that total project cost is just, just shy of thirty million right now, and...
I wish, I wish Mr. Christensen was still here.
Uh-huh.
You can see where some of his road monies are not road monies, but monies that possibly could've been used for roads as wind. Not by choice, but, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of, and you know, when you equate that to a building that's just about fourteen thousand square feet, you're just shy of about twenty-one hundred dollars a square foot for a project like that, over the course of time. It's unfortunate that we got sued with a frivolous lawsuit at one point, but we did. And hopefully, in the future, maybe policymakers like yourselves can get a handle on CECL, so it's not used for purposes it wasn't intended for. But through that, though, I really appreciate the relationship that I've had with Eric Fadness and his team, Lorenzo Lopez and Michelle, and late Bob Peterson even, remember Bob? The relationship that we had with Vanner and getting it off, started off with Andy, who you knew from Vanner, and Lance, and Eric Graham, who I don't know if you guys have been introduced to, but he's the guy that's on site every day here with Mark Oliveria, and then my staff, appreciate everything they've done. But along with that, I wanted to go through some pictures, if you go to the next slide. That just shows you the time remaining, the time that we've, the duration here. So, we're good fifty percent done with the project. Next slide. Those are just some dates, getting those to proceed in twenty-four, and hope to be done in September of twenty-five. Those are just some dates. Getting those to proceed in twenty-four and hope to be done in September of twenty-five. Even through all the rain delays. Next slide. Shows the, some money there to the contractor, which is about, you know, a little over a twenty-three million dollar contract to F and H Construction, which is also, they have also done a great job for us so far. Next slide.
As they're taking the payments, I guess they're reimbursing their subs along the way, correct?
Yes.
It's kind of nice seeing some of the subs come in. I know some of these people, one of them's my godson that is getting some work out of this too. So, it's, it's a benefit to some of our local people that work for contractors like Asta and some of the others.
It was, it was a question that we asked all through the pre-bidding qualification. It was actually a question that we asked folks and encouraged them to engage as much local people as we could. You can see there with the change orders that, with Eric's help and Lance's and Eric Graham and Mark Oliveria, we're at fourteen, seven. Now, that.
Not much.
No, it's like, it's like point five six percent. So, we're doing good. I do know that we'll have a change maybe with Vanner coming up because originally when they quoted the job, it was a fifteen-month project and we've moved that to about a twenty-month project. We might be able to shorten it a little bit, but.
That means they got more time to get their work done. They should charge us less.
Did you hear that, Lance? But we'll see how that goes. But right now, we're, we're smoking it along right, right now. It's, and we're out of the ground. They actually started placing steel. Next, next slide. There's a picture for you. They were kind enough to put in the five million pounds of building materials there that placed on the job. Next slide. That's a lot of concrete, gentlemen, so far. So, almost eight hundred yards of it. Next slide. That's a lot of rebar, too. Seventy-five thousand pounds of rebar. Next slide. That's a lot of rock. Next slide. Shows you the basement level. I think we're a little further along now, but it's about ninety percent complete in that picture. Next slide. Gives you the sort of a semi-bird's view of the parking lot there that we're working on. Next slide.
When the structure's open with that concrete being poured, there's proper drainage? So, or do they have to pump it out?
Yeah, no, we got drainage. That gives you a bird's eye view of what used to be before we started and what it looks like currently today. It's a good-looking picture. Next slide, if there's any. There's the new parking lot. So, that's what it used to look like and what it looks like today with the retaining wall before we get some paving down. And I think other than that, we have any more slides there? That's it. Give you some pictures for that.
You know, John, roughly how much you think the Sequel lawsuit from the neighbors, how much you think that costs us as far as time running into the COVID and, you know, lack of materials and expensive materials? Any idea roughly?
No, I, it's, yeah, I got more than a rough idea. It's what we reported to BSCC, our overage was twelve point one and some change. So, in two thousand and fifteen, I had this project completely paid for with lease revenue bonds and the capital facility fee with no general fund whatsoever contributing it or no other additional funding. From that point to today, it's been an additional twelve point one, twelve point two. That's what it's cost us.
It wasn't just Sequel lawsuit, it's that we hit COVID too, where everything blew up in price.
Well, and it's also the delays from the state. Dealing with the State Farm Marshal's Office and, and BSCC and Department of Finance and State General Services, all, you know, they're, you know, they're doing what they can, but they're not, they're not the most timely folks either. Takes a while to get through that process.
They're gonna be in the new parking lot. Is that going to have some kind of camera system or surveillance videos? Because things happen in parking lots. Actually, when they're going into a correctional facility.
Why, how would you know that? Marky, you remember?
Yeah. You will be?
Yeah.
So, it's recorded, so.
See, I'm already getting old. I can't remember what I'm doing anymore. I don't think it's fenced, though. We took the fence out. Yeah, so there, it's not, it was originally, we had security of fencing around it, but we've removed that right now. So, it's gonna be more like ancillary parking.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there's reasonable precautions you can take, but at some point, you could say there should be fencing around here. And there should be security gates at each entrance with guards and, you know, personally, it's like, you want some safety, but also I do value my freedoms a little bit, too. And some of these buildings you're going through down Sacramento, it's like you're going into a war zone almost, and you know, take off your boots, do this, do that, do this. And it's a point kind of like, you know, no.
I really dislike chain link fencing. And Pioneer Park, looking at Jeff, you go up there today and it's got chain link all the way around it. And I was telling Chuck just a few weeks ago that when I first started working up there, I, you know, we were having trouble with people parking all the time up the next football field. So, Tim Davenport at one point said, hey, I'm gonna stop the park, you know, people from coming into the park. So, I put these cinder blocks down with some holes and rebar and put peeler cores across it. And, you know, it raised, you know, it up that much to kind of create that barrier all the way around the park because I didn't want to have to put in fencing and look like downtown Sacramento or San Francisco. People would four-wheel drive over those things and break them. And so, eventually now we have the fencing. I get it. Anyway, thank you very much to Knox and Lewis, Vanner, and all of my staff that have been a part of that project and all of these projects. They've done a wonderful job.
Yeah, I'm glad it's progressing. It's, so when do you think it's gonna be completed?
Well, I've told them to hurry things up, so, you know. It's gonna be Glenn's job to crack that whip.
Probably another year or?
They're, they're doing what they can. I don't know if Vanner or Eric from Knox and Lewis have anything that they want to talk about. But, you know, we push them to get things done as fast as we can. You guys know me, you know, I'm kind of that driver anyway. So, you know.
Yeah, keep it going. Any other members of the public like to comment on this issue or the jail project? Looks like not. Any other questions for John about any updates? Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
All right, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Item six D, the Sierra Jobs First Project for Catalyst Funding. Discussing possible action due to a presentation by Mr. Andrew Gardner regarding Sierra Jobs First Catalyst Funding for a small biz entrepreneur startup incubator center and request for a letter of support.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Ornato and the Board of Supervisors. Good to see you today. My name is Andrew Gardner and I live in Center Creek. I'd like to talk a little bit today about the Sierra Jobs First Initiatives, and that's been going on for a couple of years now and where we're at in that process. And some of the great projects coming out of Amador County that I've been excited to work with our community leaders and organizations in that process. So, just to kind of recap what the Sierra Jobs First is, this was a regional, I gotta pull my stuff up here, so I don't have to turn my head. A regional initiative kind of brought down from Sacramento that reached into thirteen different regions throughout California. Amador County is part of the Sierra Jobs First region. So, we went through a series of phases to do research and development, looking at workforce data, economic data. And then we developed a strategic plan. Over the course of this year, I served as a consultant on the strategic planning leadership team over the course of two thousand and twenty-four. We submitted that strategic plan in August. And what we want to do here with these goals is create a pathway for investment in regionally developed economic plans that leverage future state federal funding to increase high-quality jobs, prosperous communities, and climate resilience. So, these are the broad goals of the initiative. And we also want to build equitable access to community-led, climate-forward economies with a particular focus on inclusive strategies for historically marginalized or what we'd call disinvested communities in the process. So, you could see we work with six other counties and stakeholders from tribal stakeholders, community-based organization stakeholders, industry leaders, our community colleges, Columbia College on the west side, Saracose on the east side. And it's been a pretty, pretty exciting process with a lot of people involved.
No question for you.
Yes.
How would you describe a community-led, climate-forward economies?
I think what, so what, those are our big, broad definitions of kind of looking at the future of how we can continue to build our economies that are resilient in terms of disaster, climate disasters, wildfires, power outages, where we know, like I know in Center Creek, living in Center Creek, the Bu Fire, well, that was in Calvera, so we were all affected by that. But the power outages and then obviously the pandemic, the effect that had on our small businesses and our local economies was pretty detrimental. So, how can we move forward building climate-led, community-driven economies that can become more resilient in the face of those, in the face of those crises?
I will say on, on the COVID deal, I mean, I think some of the pain we brought upon ourselves as a society, especially a government. I mean, I know Amador County, I know this board tried to do all, all it could to minimize impact to businesses, which I do appreciate. The board's outlook on that.
Yeah.
But something, the reason I'm bringing this up also is I watched sometimes some of the actions we take. Sometimes you need to look back to see what you did, to see what the results were before you move forward. I watched a spotted owl debacle happen. I could save the spotted owl and it was, you know, I don't know if I call it go green, but, you know, go nature, and I love nature. And the end result was we lost our mills all throughout this middle of the region, Sierra region, lost our economies, ended up losing our forests, and they didn't save the spotted owl neither. Right now, there's, and you hear about, we need housing for low-income and the poor. There's more wood rotting out in this forest. I mean, you could build cities with it. The mills are gone to cut it. It's laying there now. It's a fire danger. And they're paying people a lot of money to mitigate the hazards, where before people paid, loggers paid a lot of money to mitigate the hazards. Now, they're paying them, so it's just.
I'm glad you brought that up. And the strategic plan and all that work, all those strategies or all those issues came up. And the strategic plan is over a hundred pages long. But it looks at these target industries, one of which is natural resources and how we can kind of mitigate and use some of these things. Like you said, like biomass is an incredible opportunity for us to look at all of this wood and this down debris and how we can kind of turn that into an economic opportunity.
It should have been lumber.
Yeah.
Which is a lot higher value product.
Sure.
But, yeah, now I guess, I mean, we've got broken eggs. So, what can you, maybe what can you do with the broken egg? So, that's okay.
Yeah. So, looking at the timeline, we are currently in the catalyst phase. So, the strategic plan was submitted in August, and then the next phase is the catalyst phase, which means they're actually gonna throw some money down the pipe. So, the catalyst phase, you can see there, there's fourteen million dollars available.
Hey, Andrew, can I just stop you for a sec? Could you explain to my colleagues what the six different sectors are? Could you just mention them, rattle them off? I can't remember.
Yes, yes. There are, there are five target industry sectors. So, there are, you're gonna flip me on the spot here. There are sustainable recreation and tourism, also thinking about the big industries across our county, working lands and land tenure, agriculture and food security, food systems. There is small business and entrepreneurship development, workforce development, physical infrastructure, social infrastructure. There were nine total in there, and I could probably find some more information.
And that all came out of the plan?
It all came out of the plan, yeah. I'm sorry that I'm not providing more of the background information. I was, but I can certainly provide all that to you. I have that to you. We are in the catalyst program here. And so, this money is to fund pre-development projects that align with the strategic plan. And so, today, what I wanted to do is share some of those projects coming out of Amador County and then ask for a letter of support from you guys to support these initiatives. So, again, we're looking at pre-development activities and enable the region to develop exploratory projects. So, what we have an opportunity here in Amador is to bring our stakeholders together in our community groups to apply for some of this funding to do these pre-development work, to think about how we can improve these economies, support our small towns, and support our communities. Next slide, please. So, just a little background, what we're looking at, there, I know of two major primary projects that are gonna be submitted for catalyst funding. One is working with the Amador College Connect, who's been a pretty, an important community-based organization through this process. And working with all the other six counties, everybody wants one. Everybody wants an Amador College Connect because there are only two community colleges in the entire region. Columbia College is an hour and a half away. I have a sixteen-year-old son, and I've been in the school district here. And I, I see the needs to bring a lot of those higher education opportunities to our communities that can't afford the gas, make the drive. It's a pretty treacherous drive down forty-nine, definitely in inclement weather. And so, Amador College Connect, over the last twelve years, has really developed a great program to bring those courses and those opportunities to Amador County. So, as we shared that work across the other six counties, everybody said, we would need to do that. We want to set up a satellite campus. We want to be able to provide these opportunities for our students so they don't have to drive from Alpine County all the way down to Mammoth or from, you know, in our case, Amador County down to Columbia. So, that's a big project. The Amador Community College Foundation is working with the RCRC to develop a project to submit for catalyst funding on that. One of the other big projects here is the one I was gonna speak today about is a startup incubator. Amador Community College Foundation Board, John Tillman, he's on the board, and he was pretty, pretty active in the strategic planning phase. He submitted a project called a professional business center to provide services to work-from-home professionals who would like to have access to a professional environment where they would work in close proximity with other professionals from other disciplines. Basically, the idea is we have a lot of people who work from home and work virtually, and they don't have access to a lot of capital. Transportation's a barrier, buying all the stuff you need for scanners and the printers and the bookkeepers and the computers and everything else. Those are our big purchases for somebody to try to start up a business. So, the idea was, why don't we create a center where people who run those small businesses out of their homes, at their kitchen tables and their campers, and where they can go and get that support and get those resources available to them.
No question on that.
Yes.
I understand the idea. I don't know if it's, off the top of my head, it's good or bad, but it may be good, and hopefully be good, and maybe bad. But what would be your continuous funding source for a professional business center?
That is a great question, and that's one that we've been talking about because that's a pretty critical piece to applying for the funding is, how are you gonna keep that going? We always run into that when you look for these grant, like, cycle of funding. You know, when the money runs out, now what? We just close the thing down. And so, we've looked at a couple of models. There's one in Bishop right now. There's one in Bakersfield. And we're actually looking at one out of Indiana that has a different, they did the same thing. They got the grants, they developed these programs. And then they began to work with local, regional investors. If you think about, if you get a clientele that is now using these, using these programs or using these centers, you can start charging, you know, you get a hundred bucks, then you get like the premium deal, two hundred bucks a month, and you get access to these things and more. And then that becomes, kind of generates its own funding and begins to support that. This funny, this catalyst funding is just, again, creating a plan to, and a model and a framework to show how that's gonna work and be sustained in the years to come in Amador and across the region. So, with that idea, Tom DeWatt, the Center Creek City Manager, I did a, I did this presentation for Center Creek about a month ago. And he said, oh, I'm really interested in that. I think we could work with our Center Creek business community and our people and say, you know, I think this might be a good thing to pilot here in Amador County. And then take that pilot and start reaching out across the region and developing these centers to meet the needs of our small businesses and entrepreneurs.
I have a question for clarification.
Yes, sir.
That's kind of a concern of mine that this is only going to be for Sutter Creek and not Amador County.
Uh, no, this would serve all of Amador County. Um, the city of Sutter Creek, uh, they just were the ones that approached me and said, we think that we could probably do something like this. It would be available to all people across Amador with the long-term plan of developing these across, across the region. So perhaps we build a, a second one in Jackson or one in Pioneer where everybody can have access.
Listening to your answer though, and it, it sounded like it was just for Sutter Creek to begin with.
No, I'm sorry for the miscommunication. This is just, uh, the idea that we would pilot, Sutter Creek would just pilot this.
Maybe located there, but available to everybody.
It would, absolutely. Yeah. There's no, no exclusion to it, no doubt. This is a, a regional, a regional plan. Sutter Creek is just saying, let's just see what we can develop here in our town and then we could get that out across the, Amador County, across the region. Everybody as well.
I don't think working from home is going to go away, but at the same time, there's businesses out there, state of California is trying to get their employees back and the unions are fighting them. Amazon just called all their employees and said, it's time to go, come back to work.
Yeah.
Because it, what people are realizing is productivity is not as great when, when, for most people, when they work from home.
Right.
Just too many distractions.
Right, right. And I think what we're really tailoring this to is that of small business entrepreneur, um, that, uh, as somebody who, you know, um, if you think about all those things you've got to buy, that could be upwards of ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars just for the equipment to get going. And so if I'm a small entrepreneur wanting to start something here in Amador County, I could really get started without those upfront costs by participating in the center or using the services of the center, um, to make my copies, to use the conference rooms and, and things like that, to, to reduce those costs for startup. Um, so anyway, that's, uh, kind of, uh, where we're at. This is all very, very in the pre-development phase. Again, this is, these are conversations, these are notes. We are meeting with, um, stakeholders across the county and across the region, uh, to talk about this, to talk about ideas, to get, I, um, collaborate, what do you think, what would work, what are some other models? And so, um, again, that's what we're doing for the catalyst phase. We're not actually going to build anything. We're just going to develop a framework to really think about how that would work, um, in Amador County and across the region.
So is there a specific site identified or is this still conceptual?
It's all very conceptual. Yes, there is no site identified.
So it could potentially go anywhere in the county?
It could, it could. Yeah. I mean, Sutter Creek is just, they're really the only entity that approached me and said, we're interested and kind of moving forward with this.
All right. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So the four things we want to do with this catalyst funding, should we receive it, um, is form the partnerships, uh, in Amador and regional stakeholders and collaborators, uh, to identify the barriers, the needs, the outcomes and the targeted beneficiaries. So this is, uh, about a fifteen-month cycle here. Uh, we want to collect and.
Just to interrupt for a second, one thing I think would look at is Sutter Creek is good and fine and they're collaborating, but I think you really want to make it, have a chance to be successful, you have, or you'd want to have it where it's very available to the public, where, um, simply located. I mean, Sutter Creek outskirts of Sutter Creek might work, but if you're down in Sutter Creek Central, a little bit harder to get down in there. But you start to look like Sutter Hill, Martel, it's a very accessible area.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I think we're totally open to where, you know, certainly what would, what would be the best case scenario for, for the county, no doubt.
Yeah.
There's no real, um, um, just, you know, just meeting with Tom and, and he's really, it's just me and him really and, and I kind of reaching out to all the partners doing what I'm doing here today. Um, there's no real kind of like, this is a city of Sutter Creek thing. This is just, you know, how can we, um, you know, move forward with this catalyst funding and take it, take advantage of this opportunity to really think about how we can improve, um, our small business entrepreneurship in, in Amador County.
Are you familiar with, I think it's Nevada City that started, it was a tour I took with R C R C years ago. But they got, um, retired people from the media industry in there. And now it's more kind of like ten other people that have retired have formed their own businesses and it's just incredible. I mean, one day we were there and they were getting ready for a conference call with, with China on a project. So.
Yeah.
That kind of synergy, if we could get that.
Yes.
Has really just blown up that community for jobs, employment, but on an international level too.
Love it. And, and one of the ideas is to really tap into the talents of our, um, Amador businesses to come in and mentor and coach our young people wanting to start small businesses and, and be entrepreneurs. Uh, this would just be really a hub where you could really kind of bring those communities together to support that. Um, because there's a, a lot of great talent out here in our county and across our region to help, help young people kind of figure out how to do that. Um, the third objective right then is, is the work, developing the framework and the business plan outlining the key elements, um, of a startup incubator center, what we would offer, a couple of the things we'd offer, business plan development, software development, uh, collaboration sessions, how to do mission and vision statements, how to set professional goals, um, having bookkeepers available, um, uh, office assistants, um, the whole support system that otherwise would not be available just as a small business out there on your own. And then objective number four would be to build and pilot a physical, uh, facility in Sutter Creek or somewhere in Amador County and begin servicing these startup businesses. This catalyst funding, and I have the timeline, um, here at the end, again, we're looking at a fifteen-month cycle. Um, so we would actually, if we are awarded, we would be awarded in March, April of next year. And then we would have about fifteen months, um, to complete our objectives and develop a framework and a plan that we would then start applying for additional funding to build, build out these, um, these professional business centers and startup incubators. Next slide, please. Uh, these are just some pictures to, to kind of give you a visual here. Um, we're looking at, at a place in Bloomington, Indiana, uh, they took an old textile warehouse, uh, brick and mortar warehouse and, uh, that was rundown on the outskirts of, of town there in Bloomington. And, uh, they got their stakeholders and their collaborators and their investors together, applied for the money and they completely rebuilt it into a, um, a professional business center. So you can see they have the conference tables, they have desks, they have private workstations, they have all the TVs and the technology, uh, where people can access, um, all those resources and services. Next slide, and just a couple of other pictures there, private desk, cubicles where, you know, you would come in in the morning, you're running a, a job, you need to get your paperwork done and, uh, you could just come in from nine to noon, um, get all that kind of business administrative work done and acquire a professional setting.
When was that built?
Uh, this, this is the Dimension Mill in Bloomington. This was built, I think, in about twenty twelve, twenty fifteen. Um, but again, it was an old warehouse that has just run down on the, on the outskirts of town.
I guess my question would be, I mean, be interesting to see how their, how, where their funding is coming from to maintain it. Cause they maintain a building like that, heat it, cool it, you know, um, putting all, all the different infrastructure and, um,
Right.
I think you're talking a lot of money.
It is a lot of money and that's what they did. So they applied for the grants to build a, kind of like what we're doing right now. Build it out, uh, build a framework that they got the private investors to help them with the purchase of the, uh, the equipment, kind of setting it up. And then, um, and then the people who, um, participate in it all pay an annual or a monthly fee to access those services. So now it is, um, it, it still has community support from the county there. I think it's Monroe County, um, in Indiana. Um, and, you know, you have, um, all those stakeholders kind of investing in that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, what the dollars and cents are, you know, money's coming in, where's that money coming from?
Right. So, um, and Bishop, um, they are getting ready to open their business resource center on December tenth. So they've been going through this process as well.
Saying this one's been there for what, twelve years?
I, I, I believe so, yeah.
It, it'd be very good to see what the funding sources are to keep it alive. Is it self-sustaining or is it bringing a whole bunch, a bunch of money from a city or county to keep it alive? How's it functioning?
Yes. And I can, I can certainly find more information on about that.
That'd be good to know.
Yeah. I think we are planning on doing a site visit to Indiana, hopefully in the, in the next couple of months to, to talk more with, uh, um, the people who are running that. Uh, but again, we have these services already in development here within our region, uh, which is important to me. I don't think we need to go too far, uh, to, uh, find that talent and find these ideas. It's all happening right here in our region anyway, and I think that's important to work with the people here. This was just one of, one of the, uh, one model that we looked at. Uh, next slide, please. So with the Sierra Business Plan, like I said, it was, um, it's a pretty extensive plan. Um, it is available on the website and, um, you know, we can, we can certainly get any information to you. Uh, but basically this, uh, this project in particular aligns with the small business and entrepreneurship strategy area. The outcome statements for that, and that's the, a big, uh, linchpin of the catalyst funding projects is it's got to directly align with the strategic areas. Um, so in the plan, pages forty-eight through fifty-three, the outcome statements for this strategy, small businesses can access capital to launch and grow, economic diversification creates new jobs in high-wage, high-growth sectors. Downtown cores, business districts and town centers are vibrant, accessible, populated by locally-owned ventures and promote a strong and unique sense of place. And then expanded services provide technical assistance to support entrepreneurs and nonprofits as significant regional employers. And then the, the particular strategies that we would be, um, working towards through this project is to increase the impact of small business development and technical assistance, uh, providers to grow entrepreneurial opportunities. Drive economic diversification to bolster the region's resilience by attracting and supporting emerging industry clusters, carbon-neutral growth sector businesses and value-added manufacturing and tourism-supported businesses. This is language directly out of the strategic plan. And then expand access to capital for startup and existing businesses. Uh, this idea has been floating around during the whole strategic planning phase, uh, when John Tillman submitted that through it. Um, all the stakeholders, we all met in April in South Lake Tahoe and then we've been meeting, um, uh, throughout the year said, this is something that we need to move forward. Um, it's a great idea across the region and, uh, we have a very, very strong, um, strong project here that I think, um, with the right application and the right data and the right letter of support, uh, we'll be able to get that funding and move this project forward. Next slide. Um, so the application timeline, so the RFA opened on October fifteenth. It is due on December fifteenth. Uh, again, this is all in very, very pre-development phase. Uh, we don't know where, we don't know how, we're collaborating with partners and that is all part of the work right now. Um, and so we're in the project development phase, meeting with everybody, gathering letters of support and then writing the application, uh, which is due December fifteenth. Uh, the governing council, uh, the Sierra Jobs First Governing Council, which means every other month, will be voting, um, on the, all these proposals. There's, I don't know how many proposals are going to be submitted, um, during the catalyst phase, uh, but they will be voting on all of these in March. And then we should be awarded by May and then that will be a fifteen, um, month cycle to accomplish the objectives I mentioned earlier. So right now this is what we're doing. We're going around. I met with the Eastern Sierra Council of Government, um, organization last week. Um, I'm meeting with the Chamber of Commerce next week. I'm presenting to you, uh, today to, um, share what these, uh, projects are and hopefully get, uh, um, support we need to, to move these projects forward for our communities. Thank you. Next slide is my contact information. Happy to answer any more questions.
I think it's a great idea. If you could get these small business, uh, developments going on wherever it happens in Amador County, it's probably going to morph into more jobs for, for people in the community as these businesses grow.
Yes, and that's exactly the goal, right?
Um, Andrew, could, oh, is that? Never mind. Uh, yeah, just back it up one slide. So this March twenty twenty-five, the, when the council votes, the governing council, I believe I'm on that committee.
Yes, you are.
I'm not going to be, I don't think I'll, I'm not going to be on the board supervisor, so I may not be on that committee. So we need to make sure in January, whoever is on Central Sierra E D D gets on that committee and, and can participate too.
And we have other Amador, uh, community leaders also on the governing council.
Okay, or maybe, maybe someone else can be, you know, in that position as well. So just, yeah, be aware of that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Aaron Dickerson, has she been involved in this?
Yes, she has been, uh, you know, a leader from the very beginning. I've been working closely with her in the Amador Community College Foundation.
She thought she was going to retire. We're not letting her.
Oh, she's not letting go yet. Um, so again, the letter of support is really just, um, just acknowledging that this work is happening and, um, that this is all for the good of our communities and our economies. Uh, there's no obligation at this point. Um, again, where it's all very, very pre-development, um, idea generating, uh, to develop a framework about how that would look, um, in Amador County and across the, the Sierra Jobs First Region. We certainly would appreciate your support as we move forward.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gardner.
Thanks, Chairman.
Is there any members of public like to address this issue? CNN looking for possible letter of support?
Uh, I'll make a motion that the chairman sign the, um, attached letter of support for this specific catalyst project.
And maybe any modifications is?
And any modifications, CC is it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Second, we have a motion by Axe and a second by Forster. Sorry, Jeff, Forster beat you. Um, looking for a motion approved?
We did.
Excuse me, for vote, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Very much appreciated. Have a great day.
Now, the one we've all been waiting for. This is six E, discussion of possible action relative to the coordination of work currently being performed by PG&E and future work being planned in the county and Upper Ridge Road. And I think this is put on request of Pfizer Brown?
It is. Um, I'm just afraid on this one is that I've asked both PG&E and our, uh, Public Works to see if we can figure out a different way on this, but, you know, PG&E will come in and repave what they, the work that they're doing on Ridge Road. But I just hate to, for the county to sit there and tear up all that new asphalt to relay, um, car down because there's no, um, you know, we, we've known for many years that, you know, these roads need their, uh, baseline of the underneath the road to, to work on everything, you know, to make everything last, you know, the thirty years we're expecting. And I just hate to tear up all that brand-new asphalt just to put it back down again.
So basically where PG&E has done undergrounding work, they're looking to fix, fix all what they tore up and, um, maybe like all their patches.
Yeah, they're good, you know, Shake Ridge Road, they did an overlay, a two-inch overlay with a, uh, fabric protector. And I would assume they would probably do the same thing here. And so I'm just looking at it as, can we live with, um, a rusty road for six months? Um, put signage on there, hey, this is going to be all fixed at a certain point? Or do we just let PG&E do it, you know, fix it and overlay it and then us tear us back up?
Yeah, okay. Would you like to maybe bring Public Works in this conversation too?
Sure.
He looks really in for it, back there.
Come on up, Rich. Now, the one thing I will say is that this can't be a potential problem down the road for the snow season. If they're, you know, if they're plowing Upper Ridge Road, that we could chip something up. You know, there may be some areas that it, you know, we may have. More damage. So that's the, that's the thing that we're kind of, we're gambling, gambling on that it won't happen, but, you know, it, anybody who's driven it right now, you know, you gotta, it'll slow everybody down. I will say that.
And I guess the million-dollar question would be, you know, if we say, the, the main question is, okay, PG&E has spent probably a fair bit of money overlaying, redoing that. And would they even be willing to say, hey, if Amador County, we'll give you the money to fix that later next spring, summer? Or they say, um, either we fix it or, you know?
And that's the conversation. You know, this is all just happened within the last week. You know, so this is, you know, I don't know if Rich has gotten in contact with PG&E. I, I asked the PG&E to get in contact with you. Have they, have they contacted you?
The gentleman that were in my office, I have not talked to.
You have not talked to him?
Correct. I've, I've talked to the project manager, with the PG&E's project manager for this project.
Okay.
So I'm going to, yeah, since, like you mentioned, it's kind of short notice. So I'm going to, yeah, since, like you mentioned, it's kind of short notice, and so I apologize for not having everything up and about, but I'm going to have to, what I want to do is I'm going to go away from the mic.
Let's start real quick, now, don't go away from the mic.
Okay.
You need to, why don't you start with what we're doing? What we're planning on doing, we got funding for the two-point-three million we got from Senator Alvarado Gill. Then what we're, where that, the status is on that and when we plan on doing that work.
Sure, okay. So that work is currently under engineering design. We have a consultant on board that's looked at that project. I know they've done some preliminary fieldwork as far as so, some borings along the route. And again, as a refresher, it's, we're looking at the stretch from Highway eighty-eight down to Climax Road. That design is not complete yet. They're in the middle of formulating what that pavement improvement will look like. And so, but the idea, and the goal is to be able to have plans and specifications ready to bid out next spring in order to do improvements next construction season. That's the plan. So with that, the thing that, I guess, oh, okay. Thank you. So what I wanted to show is what we would, what we're requiring PG&E to do.
Maybe bring that right up next to you so you can talk in the mic when you're drawn on that.
Won't look, this won't work very well for your video, but you're the people who need to see it, so. So anyway, you have your cross-section of your road, okay? And PG&E, for example, has their trench right here, okay? So what we would require typically is, we'll call it like a T-section or trench where we go and it's a foot off each side of it, and you would have a pavement patch here. That's what we would typically do. In this case, we would ask, and PG&E's willing to do this, is to also send this pavement, the edge of pavement, so that the patch would go from, it's about center of the travel lane over to the edge of pavement. The trench is not located close enough to the center line to require them to pave the whole lane. So you're talking about a, about a half a lane of pavement patch there. So that's what would be required them to do.
Question on that, is there any way you could have them go clear to the center line? Because over time, you'll probably see it drop some, and you're going to have uneven surface.
Well, we have a standard that they're following, and it's a two-inch pavement patch, two inches thick of asphalt.
My question maybe would be this, just looking at the future, but maybe, it's one thing if you're doing a small, small little project here or there, you have that standard and you follow a standard. But if you have a major project where they're going a long, long way disruption, I wonder if we shouldn't change that standard maybe and say it needs to go to center line?
We could do that, but remember, there is no overtime here. We're talking about coming back and replacing this whole thing six months after it's done.
No, I know, I'm just saying, just on a side note.
For future similar situations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the idea of what they've, what their project and based off of our requirements, this is what they're planning on doing, going in, planing out this section here and resurfacing it. Our, now, there's about...
You know, one question I'd have is when are they planning to do this work? Because asphalt plants can be shutting down pretty quick, have not shut down already.
So there's about forty-six-hundred feet of trench out there. Well, this is about almost eighty-seven, eighty-seven, point eighty-seven miles, if that helps anybody. They're planning on starting this work next week and be completed in two weeks. That's their schedule.
Oh, they got problems. I mean, if the weather holds, it might be okay, but we're almost middle November.
Well, it'd be...
They're looking paving in the first part of December, almost?
If it takes that long.
Thank you.
So like I say, there's almost forty-seven, forty-six-hundred feet of trench out there. It varies, most of the trench, three-quarters of it's in the eastbound lane, and it switches over, and there's the another quarter of it is in the westbound lane. Now, one other thing I wanted to show, and we've got some, I've got some photos, let's say if you have your roadway here, the center line, and you have your trench running through here. You'll, and we'll see some photos, there's some, sometimes it crosses, like when you're crossing over, maybe to continue, or maybe there's a side road here that it's trying to serve. There's also some cutouts periodically along the way. So you can imagine their trench and what they've worked on is this. So what we, if we don't do any work, what's left, we've got segments of pavement, and this here is maybe a couple feet wide of old pavement in between the patches. If we don't fix this the way it's planned, you're going to have all this area, not only is the trench, which is right now been temporarily filled with cold mix, which won't last through the winter, it'll be popping out throughout the winter, as well as these patches here. We've got the existing pavement, which has been detached from the road itself. These are kind of like islands of core pavement that are going to fall apart as well. But under what was being proposed is we'd have this, you know, I didn't... And so this whole, that all gets eliminated because it gets patched up. Now, I can, and I just wanted to show this because, so you understand what's being in front of you, and I can appreciate where you're coming from with this. But this will become a maintenance nightmare if we don't fix it the way it's supposed to be fixed. I don't know, can you put up the photos?
Nick, when they, when we do the whole Ridge Road, will that, all this material be ground up and reused?
Yes.
Well, there will be some use for the material.
Yeah, it'll just, it'll just be, they'll come by, and depending on what's being designed...
It's just double work. It is, but there's no way to avoid that at this point. I agree with you. It seems like a waste, and in some sense it is, but...
So...
I'm saying put a sign up on each end of it. Yeah, and go from there.
So we took some photos of it, and you can see where you have the trench, you have some cutouts going off to the shoulder area. There's about a two or three-foot strip there between the trench and the edge of pavement where that's probably not going to survive very well. Because again, now it's floating by itself, it's not tied to the rest of the pavement like it was before.
You know, question on those, could you, when you have those horizontal laterals, something like that, could you put some hot mix in there and bring it back up to grade with that hole, do you think, better?
That would be a bare minimum, yes. I don't know if you can...
You ready?
Yeah. Just these are different examples.
You know, another question I'd have, I guess, is would, probably the million-dollar question before we argue and discuss it too much is, would PG&E even be willing to do that? If they're not willing to do that, then it's kind of, it's a moot issue.
Right, if they're, if they're not willing to give us money in return for not having to do this work, then yeah, I think the question is moot. But I think if we could get a hundred thousand dollars in return for having to, having to suffer through this for a winter, I think it's probably worth it doing. I guess, I think the thing that really, really brought this into focus a little bit more was the sound rejection of Measure Q, which says to us that the voters think that we have enough money already, that we need to be making it, stretching it as far as we can, and this is how we stretch it. It's going to be, it's going to stink for the driving public. They either go around it or they go through it, but this is what we're going to have to do, or all of our roads are going to look like this. Most of them do already, but this is something we can do.
One question I guess I'd have, it is what it is, not that I like the situation, how it's set up, but what about liability? Would there be any liability factor, or much?
I mean, always a liability of having a road that's beat up.
I guess, and that was a question I was going to ask county councils, we're sitting here, we're acknowledging this is not ideal conditions, and there's a likelihood that it's going to deteriorate over winter, yet one has a claim from this, for example. I mean, in the past, typically, well, I can let Greg address this, but the thing is, we're acknowledging it's kind of in bad shape.
Yeah, let him address it.
I don't know what our liability is moving forward.
You know, I mean, kind of the standard answer you'd get from a lawyer, it kind of depends, because...
I appreciate you being honest.
On one hand, we didn't create the condition, that's PG&E's work. They have an encroachment permit, you know, arguably, we could say, if we got a claim and there was damage and it was attributed to that work, we could say, hey, PG&E, this is your issue. But there would, they would turn around and say, well, yeah, we were going to repair it, but you asked us not to. So it's possible that, you know, but we can put, we could sign it, like was suggested, that the road's rough and, you know, rely on that for the winter.
And I will say, if you look at some existing roads, Fiddletown Road comes to mind, it's got some issues there right now that are cold patched, if anything. No offense, Rich, you're doing your best, I get it, it is what it is, so I mean, it's pretty rough, it's a lot rough than I like going in the winter, but it's the Measure Q didn't pass, Rich is limited in staff and he's limited in dollars. It's a big, big issue.
But just to back up, the standard for if we're liable for damage that happens because of a condition of public property is usually if we've created it or we've known about it for a sufficient period of time to make a repair to have avoided the harm.
Can't we put up signs?
So, I mean, we could sign it, and, you know, there's a difference between a bumpy road or, you know, a damaged road that's not fun to drive on but not dangerous, and then, you know, if a pothole occurs, then we have to, we have to act on it once we know about it. I mean, it's kind of the position we take now on, say, Shake Ridge. It's in bad shape at places, we know that, but we, you know, we may not know about the pothole that...
Like Fiddletown Road and stuff, yeah. You know, one thing too, I mean, it's, the county doesn't have that, Public Works doesn't have that many available people, and I mean, the question that I'd heard somebody pose has a good question, okay, they're up there piling snow and all hands are on deck, and probably not, if you have a big snow down low, probably not enough hands. So then, is there some way, if PG&E says, yes, they're willing to do that, and we say we want to go that way, is there some way we get some extra help or some people for Public Works? You know, a person to you just saying, hey, we got, they're available, so they have a little more staff, because you're probably going to have some issues up there if we do this. That are good, people are going to say, hey, you know, this is getting really bad, county needs to want to do something about it, and they're out plowing snow. And also, when you, when you put in cold, cold mix, it does want to hooch out or scatter out, and then you got snow and you got rain, and it's kind of hard to really repair it. It's kind of a, the question is how bad would it get, I guess, and I don't know that, maybe Rich knows, maybe Chuck knows, but...
You know, like you mentioned, things will deteriorate when we're busy doing other stuff. I mean, when the weather's like this, not a big deal. If something happens, we can go address it, but probably when this will deteriorate during storms, during cold weather, during wet, snowy weather, we're going to be plowing, we're going to be dealing with storm damage or whatever, then we got to go and treat forty-six-hundred feet of trench for whatever potholes are going to occur either in the trench or alongside the trench, because I worry about the segment of the road between the trench and the edge of pavement. I think that's just going to be susceptible for damage affecting...
That's what I was wondering, those little offshoots, if you could just, quick and dirty, or it'd be pretty, use some hot mix in those. If we went forward, I think it'd be advisable to do that because the parallel trenches, I don't think would be...
That's what we're asking PG&E to do. And you talk about the work that they're doing under the encroachment permit, they're going to say, well, that's part of their permit is to restore the trench. So what they would be done, they'd walk away from it unless they're...
Yeah, they're going in there and probably grind it out, like overgrind, I'm just saying, just put some hot mix, it's probably low right now because cold mix sinks. Just say, okay, it's low, put some hot mix there, bring in a compactor, vibratory plate or whatever, and just make it level, it'll, I think, it'd probably make it through winter. And as far as a parallel trench, just say, hey, it's got cold mix, and leave it at that. It's fine. But I think...
Oh, I don't know, it's, as you all know, it's a constant challenge to keep our roads together, and I see this as going backwards. I understand the question, and I understand the proposal and such, and from a financial standpoint, I get that, but as having to deal with the challenge of trying to keep the roads passable is setting us up for failure in my mind. But that's, that's my opinion, I mean, I'll do whatever the board's pleasure, but to understand that, you know, we have eight thousand people a day use this, use this road, and it'll probably be a little more in the winter with ski traffic here is going up to Kirkwood, that's we don't see today. So, you know, it's one of our busiest roads, if not busiest county road we have. You know, if we had five hundred cars a day, I wouldn't worry about it.
You know, I think probably, the big question I see, we probably should get from PG&E what they figure it's going to cost, that work, and would they be willing to put that money aside? And if they're not willing, if the money's not much, or if they're not willing to put it aside, it's, tell them to go forward. I mean, that's kind of what I see.
I think we ought to let staff do their job and move forward on this. I agree with you, Supervisor Brown, it's a, be considered a waste of money, but the timing of it is such that we just need to get it done and, and leave the roads in proper condition so they can at least be driven on through the winter. And it's just a standard governmental waste of money. I agree, but a timing issue.
Yeah, I think this...
Not up to them. Be nice if these two projects had coincided.
You will not get two projects closer to each other than these are right now. Honestly, PG&E is doing it right now. Six months after they're done, we're going to come in. I mean, any other day, if we can't suffer for a little bit, then I think we're...
But we are going to reuse them, the material will be reused.
Eh, yeah, I mean, to a limited extent, but the most what you're paying for is to put it down, not for the material itself.
You're paying for cover, covering up the holes that were created, and that's unavoidable. You're paying for cover, covering up the holes that were created, and that's unavoidable.
One of the questions I have is where these trenches were created, um, is there gonna be further settling, so, and, and the, you know, the thought is, after we repaved the road, will those areas still settle even further and create kind of like a, a depression where water will collect and accelerate the deterioration of, you know, what would probably be a pretty good, you know, by removing that crown in the road, do we have to worry about that?
In the long term, I would say probably this season we might, um, there is compaction on the trenches, but, um, it's never as perfect as we like it, um, but I would say, you know, with, with the compaction that was done, and I would say through this winter season, we provide enough settlement, if there's gonna occur, that'll occur this, this winter.
So you think it'll settle out, so when we come in and, uh, repave the road in the spring, then we don't have to worry so much about?
We're gonna be doing a reconstruction, not just a resurfacing, so we're gonna be going very deep.
You're gonna go six inches, or?
Yes, and reconstruct versus just repaving.
So wouldn't it make sense then just to have PG&E pay us something extra for their part, and then we'll reconstruct it?
Well, that was part of the
That was what we're asking it, so to do that, that would involve being, having the public endure the, the rough road.
Yeah, just put up, put up signs saying, drive, you know, reduce speed, ru- rough road, and I think that'll immunize us against any, uh, pothole problems, you know, 'cause most of the times, these people are driving way too fast.
Well, it would definitely slow, slow them down. The, uh, you know, the issue's gonna be, uh, it, it will get rough, it will be difficult for us to get to, uh, to repair, uh, potholes and, you know, with, with snow and, and rain and, and whatnot, it will be a challenge. But, uh, the, uh, the other step is to, to make sure that, you know, we get some signs up that explain what we are doing, that we're saving money by not doing this twice, and, uh,
That would be good.
Yeah.
Just telling the public, hey, this is what we're doing and why.
And that, that the repair is coming, um, in six months, uh, you know.
Can you put the metal plates down, will that help?
Uh, not the whole way, you certainly couldn't, and that's, that's our problem, is that, uh, that this trench goes the entire length of the
And, and you don't wanna put those metal plates on the downward hill slide, you know, you'd get the slick. And taking a snow off, the road crew wouldn't appreciate the metal plates.
Okay.
And it, it will be, it will be bad, and, and that's, that's, it, this is, it's, uh, it's almost like a trolley problem. The, uh, that you've got a, uh, uh, do you wait, or do you waste the money?
I, I think it'd be really, really crucial, as far as I'm concerned, is how much money we talking about? If it's not that much money, do it. If it's quite a bit of money, it might be worth a little bit of pain and, and some phone calls and telling people, hey, slow down. Um, so I think, will PG&E even consider it?
Yeah.
That's number one, and number two, is, is the money worth it, worth it for the county to say, hey, let's deal with the pain?
Well, they give us that number in a, in a fashion that we can make a timely decision.
Yeah.
That's another question. But right now, if the board is, is interested in it, we will pursue it, if not, then we'll just tell PG&E to finish it up.
I would be interested in hearing what that number is. And you know, and if need be, um, have a, if we had to have a special meeting, we probably could. I know Rich doesn't a lot like that answer, I'm sorry, Rich, but, um,
That's, that's probably gonna delay this by what, a couple of days or a week, waiting for that answer?
Well, I, yeah, hard to say, all I know is, I, the, when I talked to the project manager, they were scheduling to start this on the eighteenth, which I believe is next Monday.
Well, I think they should, they should be able to get some answer, they should know what that number is right now. If they're looking to start, I, I'm sure, I, I would think PG&E'd have a number. I don't think they'd be doing timing material hardly. One never knows, though.
I, I, my feeling is this is a time you do what's right for the traveling public, and the delay at all is gonna hurt the ability for people to navigate these roadways. I mean, if we could, problem, if we could get an answer in a day or two without holding this project up, I'm not sure that would happen. Unless we forgive the Chair and Vice Chair authority to, to make the decision.
Yeah, I know, 'cause you'd have to probably notice a special meeting, was it seventy-two hours? Twenty-four?
Twenty-four hours, yeah.
Okay, so that could be done pretty quick. I mean, it's, I, I don't mind if, if, if a, if a board talked about it and gave, um, Chair and Vice Chair, um, permission to say yea or nay, but it'd be kinda nice to know where the board's at, if we're gonna do that.
I gu- I guess my feeling is, is, uh, let's tough it out through the winter, you know, I, I don't even know if they can do a very good job of patching it, you know, 'cause it's gonna, weather's gonna get bad.
That's true, weather is cold, it's rainy, it's wet, um, and I think what is it, I think it's fifty-four degrees, I'm not sure, you don't wanna leave Blacktop blow that, you know the number, Rich?
It, it depends on, on the mix design, it can go fifty degrees. I've seen some that, if it's forty-five and rising, usually that's the case, you know, if you start in the morning, there's that critical temperature and it's gotta be rising, so if you get to that temperature in the afternoon, you have to stop because it's gonna get cooler. But it depends on the mix design that they're, they're planning on using.
I'm okay with the Chair and Vice Chair, you know, make that last minute decision, you know, it's, it's one of those things that we wanna try to do the best for our roads. We're all on the same page on that aspect, but, you know, if it's not, if PG&E's not gonna give us any money, then it's, you know, it is a mute point.
Yeah, I don't know how that works, so.
Well, and that's, the problem's gonna be how long it's gonna take to get that answer.
Measure Q, if it's right in, we got plenty.
It might take a week to get that answer, and then your timeline is, is blown.
I don't think we're gonna wait a week, I wouldn't think hardly.
Wouldn't wait over about a day.
Yeah, we won't get an answer.
Give them a day to give an answer.
I think a week would be maximum time to wait.
'Cause the thing is, if they've got their contractors scheduled to start on Monday, they need to be able to tell them to not come in, or if we want them to do something different, or whatever, they need to know ahead of time.
Have you put, yeah, phone calls, emails in the PG&E yet?
Yeah, I, I, I kinda let them know this was coming, um, well, I tell you, at, at, at a minimum, something you mentioned, Supervisor Neto, is, is having them actually hot mix patch the trench itself.
Mm-hmm.
If we do nothing, if we leave it as it is now, and, and I, I tried to find pictures that would show, I mean, the trench looks fine, but the, the pavement next to it doesn't look good, and that thing, the whole thing's just gonna fall apart. And, um, I don't know, I, I'm not sure what to say, other what, other than it's, uh,
Just tell us where you're at, I mean, that's
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess I'm looking out for myself and, 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 and the crew working and having to fix this, it's gonna be a real nightmare for the next six months.
And Mr. Ely, yeah, that's a former Public Works guy too, I mean, would you concur with Mr. Vela to move forward on this expeditiously, or?
I would, um, I'm gonna disagree with, with Rich. I, I would hold off on doing this, I, I think there, it would, the money's not the biggest part, the, I think the bigger issue we've got is the public's faith in, in our administrative abilities. And for, to have what's gonna look like to the public, a, a quarter to a half, uh, road with paved, come in and tear it back up six months later, is, is the epitome of, of government stupidity.
Even though it's not really something we did or our fault, I understand the same.
Even though, yes, I, I mean, we can explain it till the, the cows come home, but it will not be heard. It will, they just, they will just see what we do, which is put new asphalt down, tear it up, and then go ask them for a half cent sales tax. That is what they see.
I will say, I've seen that with Caltrans, they paved Highway sixteen, beautiful job, and within weeks, months at the most, but a few weeks, they put a sign out there, road construction, I stopped and said, hey, what are you guys doing here? Oh, we're putting in all new covers down Highway sixteen. I'm like, you gotta be, blah, 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 kidding me, you just paved it? Yeah, I was, I was just matter and hell, um, which is probably a little bit different situation, 'cause they were controlling both aspects. So, yeah, I was, I was very unhappy.
The, the things we're gonna be talking about down the road, in order to, to save money, to do more of work like this, none of them are gonna be pleasurable, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have to stop doing something in order to have money to do something. And it is, it's not gonna be pleasant, what we do, we don't do a lot of, uh, of arbitrary things, things that are not mandated by state. And that's, um, that's our, our challenge, but we, we're in, here, I just see this as a, as an opportunity to pinch some pennies and improve our public perception.
Well, okay, um, I, I think I'd, I'd like to see how much money we're talking, um, and, and if it's not, not a whole lot, um, maybe, yeah, I understand what you're saying there, Mr. Ely, and I agree with it. If it's not much money, I think we, we might take that political hit.
I, I do agree with that, too, uh, uh, I, as, as frustrating as it is, yeah, if they're not gonna give us any, anything in return, then we go get what we got, and then we've at least got the additional asphalt material sitting on there that can be reclaimed.
Yeah.
Hey, so let's give, uh, Mr. Vela a day or two, and I, I would say by the end of Wednesday, if we don't have an answer, then Chair and Vice Chair need to make the decision.
The contractor's gonna be working on getting his crews moved up there.
Yeah, I, I get, I make, I make another day, maybe Thursday, another day Thursday, at least, it's gonna take a couple of days, minimum.
How about midday Thursday, that gives them two days? Otherwise, it's gonna be too late to call off the contractors.
Yeah, um, yeah, and, I, I think, and, and end of the day Thursday, um, 'cause they got, they got Friday, weekend, Monday, well, Friday.
You might as well say they're not gonna get it done, the project won't start on Monday. I mean, you're taking, taking most of the week to give them the opportunity to give us a, an answer.
Contractors, they're, they're there right now, I mean, so, I mean, they're, they're probably just waiting for yes or no to go. I don't think they have to mobilize much equipment at all.
Well, I guess it's just left ASAP.
Yeah, I can go for that. Got a second? Well, I, do we have a first, I didn't hear the first. Was that a motion?
Directional staff, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that'll work, directional work.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, and you're okay with, if, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, they might need a motion for that? Yeah, we need a motion for that.
Ultimately, if there's, and I think we need, probably need a motion, or it's gonna have to come back.
If you're gonna delegate a decision to someone less than the board, um, then I think you need a motion. Uh, otherwise, you, you get the answer and then have a special meeting and then come back to decide.
Looking for a motion?
Well, I would, in that motion, I would include midday Thursday as, as D-Day. So, I'll make the motion to delegate this to Chair and Vice Chair to have, uh, Public Works Director, Public Works Director, Vela, try to get an answer as to how much money the contractor will, will, uh, give to the county, and set the deadline as, as noon on Thursday.
How much money PG&E, PG&E or the contractor, probably PG&E I think, but whichever one it is?
Whichever will allocate back to the county.
Okay.
Assuming that'd be the PG&E, 'cause the contractor is working for PG&E, not for us.
But whichever it is, you know, I'll second that. I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Chair is unanimous, sorry about that, Rich, um,
Well,
We'll do the best we can do.
All come in, they come in, that's all I can say, we'll do our best.
We'll send him Frank Swates in his district, I guess it's my district too, darn, um, but anyway.
Frank's okay, he's gonna be gone soon.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, item six F, this is Board Supervisor's meeting schedule for calendar year two thousand twenty-five?
I'd move to approve the minutes with, uh,
No, no, this is, um, the, the calendar.
Oh, all right, all right. I don't really, I don't really care about this one, so I'm not going to meetings next year.
So only three of you get to vote on this, the, um, really the only thing that's changed on it is the, um, uh, uh, October, November, December schedule, November eleventh of next year is, uh, a board meeting day, it's also Veterans Day, so we wouldn't be here. So I moved that one to the week before, which would be the first Tuesday, so, uh, November fourth would be one, and as such, I also shifted the, the two meetings in October to the first and the third meeting of that, uh, week. Really, the only change, we could change, uh, November twenty-fifth meeting to the eighteenth meeting if you wanted, we don't have a meeting on Thanksgiving week, and we've only got one meeting scheduled for the month of December.
Okay, you got a meeting on Thanksgiving week this year, right?
We do, yes, so if, if the board wanted to, uh, you know, it's up to you.
I'm good with, I'm good with how it is.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't see any members of the public wanting to comment on this issue, so probably, I think I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Cruz, second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Chair is unanimous. Pardon?
Take a break.
Sure, want a break? Yeah, we'll take a break and come back in roughly five minutes.
Well, we've, well, we've only got two items left, but that's okay.
Well, yeah, we have, you need a break, Chris.
If we need to go, we need to go.
I think you need a break. I need a break. Calling back to order. Where we are here? Six G. We got the calendar done, and we're moving on to six G. This is RCRC. Is discussing impossible action relative to the designation of twenty, twenty-five delegates and aliments for RCRC. I'm GSFA and ESJPA.
Up to you guys, me and Frank are out of the picture.
So, uh, so Jeff, you're the main delegate?
No, I'm the alternate.
You're the alternate, well, I hope. Oh, yeah, that's right, Brian's...
Brian's the main alternate. I'd like to stay on there at least probably for another year, cause I, we have been getting PG&E to change course. I was dealing with, uh, Tree. There's a vegetation program up in the up country, and, uh, I've been enjoying going to the meetings and...
I'm fine with that.
With Sacramento.
Yeah.
You wanna stand as the alternate? Yeah, I wanna stand as the alternate. So who, somebody needs to be the main? Well, I'm assuming Brian, uh, that's up to Brian.
Yeah, I'll stay there.
And maybe at some point, um, maybe you might become the main, or, I don't know if you ever do CSAC, cause Richard, you're a CSAC guy.
Yeah, I, I took over the main for CSAC.
Okay.
And that's why I asked him if he wanted to be on both. I questioned that. What are you doing on RCRC?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's just...
He wants to stay one more year. I don't see a problem with that.
I don't either.
Yeah.
And maybe down the road, um, maybe, uh...
Well, wouldn't it make sense to, uh, get one of the new guys going on RCRC if you're gonna go to CSAC, or, you know?
Well, uh, he said he'd like to finish what he's doing at RCRC for a year, which I think's okay.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
And, um, maybe one of them could be a CSAC alternate or something like that.
Yeah, that would be...
Well, they have to be. We have to get an alternate out of CSAC.
Yeah. I mean, cause I don't, I don't think Pat wants to do that, being CSAC. Yeah. So one of them could be a CSAC alternate, and down the road, maybe, um, RCRC, one or both will step off out of something like that.
Okay. Sounds good to me. So I'd move to appoint Supervisor Neto as the delegate for RCRC and Supervisor Brown as the alternate for twenty twenty-five.
Again?
Motion by Forrester, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carry unanimous. Moving down to Item Six H, Wildfire Task Force's wood utilization strategy.
Yeah, I, I was, I brought this forward. I got a, I got this email to me from, um, a supervisor in Mariposa County who is also, they're participating in the Sierra Jobs First, and I think that they wanted this, cause they wanna, they wanna get a biomass plant in Mariposa County. So, that's why I got the email asking us to support this, uh, this strategy and that the governor, you know, uh, sign on to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we did, uh, so Toolumee's trying to get a biomass plant, now...
Not Toolumee, uh, uh, Mariposa.
No, I understand. Toolumee's also trying to get a...
Well, they already have one. I know that, in Chinese Camp.
Mm-hmm. That's true, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if they wanna get another one.
What was the, Mr. Chairman, what was the letter we just?
Yeah, it was biomass related, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So...
But it's, well, the thing is, I mean, you, I think what is, people are looking at different ways to not burn up.
I don't know if it, uh, you know, I think, I certainly think biomass is a helpful part of forest management and, um...
If we could only get the California Resources Board to buy into that.
That's, that's a problem, you're right, Richard.
This will kind of, you know, take care of that, but, you know.
Something else I've heard too is, uh, I don't know if it's true or not, but I've heard talk that SPI is not doing much, much, or any pile burning anymore. Uh, I think, I don't know if it's, if it's the air issues, but I'm pretty sure it's, I think they're looking at maybe, um, fire issues, or, you know, escape fires from their burn piles. But I know they're doing, they're chipping a lot of their, uh, stuff in, in, up in the woods, I've been hearing. And that's kind of, that's, that's a, a new deal.
I thought this item was from, from John Hopkins first, the length of it, but, um, you killed...
No, I got it from... Be nice now.
Rose Marie Smolcom from, uh, Toolumee, who's on the, also, they're also...
We killed a lot of trees making this agenda.
Well, I don't see any in the public wanting to comment. So I'm looking for motion on this, far as letter support?
I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, for the board, for this Chairman's signature on a letter of support for the, um, uh, Wildfire Task Force Wood Utilization Strategy to the Governor.
Motion by Axe, there's a second?
Second.
And a second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That one, carry unanimous. Uh, Richard, we're down to minutes.
I, I'd move to approve with two minor changes of add one period and one comma.
Okay.
Again?
We have a motion by Forrester and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carry unanimous with that. We're gonna go back into closed session. Thank you.